I would ask you questions.
What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
I support the flag of the state of New Mexico.
The state of New Mexico is the symbol of perfect friendship among the United Nations.
If you begin this meeting, we come to you today asking for your advice as to our support for our county. May they make decisions that are pleasing to you and have the best interest of our county in our total existence. We pray that this meeting brings success, growth, and beauty to our county. And we ask you to launch over our project, all law enforcement officers, as a symbol of our community's prosperity.
Amen.
That's wonderful.
Okay, public comments.
We haven't received any, and there is, I don't believe there's any one in the audience for public comments this morning, sir.
Okay, approve expense approval report for June 2020. Any questions? Any comments?
No.
Okay, get a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the expense approval report for June of 2020.
Second. Okay, have a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Okay, treasurer's report.
Information, just the regular monthly report.
Okay, request for a special commission meeting, Roberta Smith.
Morning, Roberta.
Morning.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I usually come to you this time every year to request a special commission meeting. We usually have a process we have to follow for closing everything out and balancing and doing all our year-end reporting. So currently, right now, you know, we have to wait for the treasurer's office to finish balancing, and she doesn't get some of her bank statements until the middle of Ju- uh, July. So I'm requesting a special commission meeting for July 24th, preferably in the morning, to approve, you know, year-end budget adjustments, quarterly report, the final budget, and any other year-end closing reports that I have.
This is in preparation for submitting our final budget to the state?
Correct, our final budget's due July 31st to the state.
Do we do it 21st, or the 23rd?
Um...
I didn't bring my phone up.
I don't think there's anything particular, not a little...
I think that should work, that would...
Ms. Laurie, will you have all your reports by the 20?
Hopefully so.
So the 23rd's a Wednesday. Can you finish your reports?
I'll have to give myself two by that Sunday then.
The 23rd's a Thursday.
Oh yeah, 20, sorry, 23rd, 23rd's Thursday, I apologize, so we could have things in Monday and then...
I won't be here the 23rd or the 24th.
Public notice.
And I won't be here the 24th.
Be out of town.
So would we have a quorum on the 23rd?
Yeah, I would for the 23rd, I'll be here.
Okay.
I won't be here the 23rd or 24th, but Ernie will be here the 23rd.
I'm gonna be out the 21st, actually.
Will you be here the 23rd, the Thursday?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so we'd have a quorum on the 23rd, and that would allow us to have the notice out on Monday afternoon? And give us time to, for a Thursday meeting, Thursday morning meeting?
What time would you like it at?
Well, I usually get the office at 6:30, so... Anytime is fine for me, so...
I like how Ernie thinks.
The earlier the better, 8 o'clock?
8 o'clock, that'll work.
So, when, from, the two coming from Artesia is eight, alright?
If it's from Artesia, sure.
I mean, 8:30, 8, 8...
I didn't say 6:30.
Yeah, I ain't going 6:30, I go late, I ain't going 6:30.
8 o'clock? Okay, 8 o'clock.
And I just need a...
We need a motion and an approval.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we set a special commission meeting for... A special commission meeting for July the 23rd at 8:00 AM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Roberta.
Thanks, Roberta.
Okay, approve, disapprove, two indigent burials, Veronica Parris.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am seeking approval for two indigent burials with Dentonwood Funeral Home today.
Okay, questions? Commissioner Woods? Okay, call for the vote, or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve two indigent burials in the amount of $600 each going to Dentonwood Funeral Home.
Second. Got a motion and a second, call for the vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Just trying to move things along.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Sheriff Deputy Overhire, Sheriff Mark Cage.
Been approved version.
I was gonna say he got younger.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Mr. County Manager. Sheriff's Office seeking approval for an overhire for a deputy position. We currently have three positions open right now, one being a detective and two being deputies. Our big need right now is deputies on the streets, and basically our cost savings for a deputy over a detective is $14,665.55 per year. And once we get those positions filled, we have three good candidates right now to hire three people. And the position will be absorbed by attrition once we have a promotion for detective.
So the issue for the overhire, the number of total positions in the sheriff's department doesn't change, but there are a certain number allotted to deputy positions. So they want to take, add another deputy position, but they have total, so the head count, total head count doesn't rise. It's shifting one position from one group to the deputy group. And then when there's a need and the opportunity arises for a detective, then they'll open that up, post it, and successful candidate will move into that role, and they'll absorb the other deputy position. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
Questions, Commissioner Crockett?
I don't have any.
Commissioner McCutcheon. Commissioner Woods?
Yeah.
Commissioner Henry. Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the sheriff deputy overhire for the sheriff's department.
Second.
Second.
Okay, call for the vote.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Okay, moving on.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Budget adjustment for Public Works Road Chip Seal Equipment, Jason Burns.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman, commissioners. As we kind of reported at the last meeting, we realized the significant cost savings in the last fiscal year with our projects and not due to the lack of progress that we made on these. Before the meeting, I gave you a kind of a little breakdown of a few of our chip seal projects, and you could see where with our county crews out completing work versus utilizing third parties, we're seeing significant cost savings. And with that, some of our aging equipment is causing time delays with breakdowns. So what we're requesting is to use the cost savings from last fiscal year to purchase new chip seal equipment so that we can keep going at the pace we're going.
Questions, Commissioner Crockett?
I don't have any questions, I just want to say that this is quite refreshing that you have this cost savings, that we're able to possibly use it towards equipment, so, good job.
Commissioner McCutcheon?
Just a question, the traffic control, Eddy County's not reporting a line item for that, it's all zeros across there.
When we use a third-party vendor, they will charge us for traffic control to go out and maintain. And also on this, I felt like I was pretty conservative, because we also have flaggers out there that will stop traffic as we're chip sealing and working. So that is a line item. Also, the same thing you'll see with grading, our traffic control is included in our personnel costs within the projects, and so is our grading costs, is included in the process placing and compacting when we grade the roads, prepping them for chip seal.
Okay, and that's, yeah.
So they're part of this regular crew contingency. And when we, in other bid work that we've done, they show up as line items for specific elements.
So, so, so our cost to do those is basically absorbed in the crew that's already on site, and, and those costs are scattered out through everything else. I think these are significant cost savings, you know, I mean, say $956,000, that's, that's nothing to sneeze at. I think that's, I think that's just wonderful, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Woods? Commissioner Henry? I tell you, I think it's a good idea to upgrade equipment on a regular basis. We need to start a program to do that because of the fact that I know the cost of equipment as you have to start repairing it. Some of the repair costs can, can absolutely run more than replacing it with new equipment. And so we need, if we're going to be into that, we need to have the best equipment that we can afford and buy here at the county. So I'm all for it. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for the budget adjustment for Public Works Road Chip Seal Equipment.
Second. Okay, have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Resolution and consent agenda, do we have anything that anybody needs to pull out and discuss?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
No, sir.
Commissioner Woods? Okay, then can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Okay, department updates.
Just real quick, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. We did have a pre-construction meeting on North 26 yesterday, it went very well. With your approval of the contract today, they are wanting to mobilize and start that project tomorrow. We are getting PSAs out, traffic control will be out. But just know that they're gonna be working on that for the next 30 to 60 days. We're expecting them to get in and, and get out here pretty quick, and that'll be a really good one to get kind of marked off. The other big one that we're currently working on right now is Bound Road in the southern part of the county. The Eddy County crews are doing that, we're currently processing and placing and compacting that one, grading it. And the current plan is to break it up with a section of pavement and then a section of chip seal. So those are both currently ongoing, and we'll, we have several others that we're gonna try to do before the end of the season, so...
Are you got questions?
Yes, sir.
Did someone else go for me?
Go ahead.
26th Street, are you gonna make that a little wider?
Yes.
I've lost a lot of green lines.
Yes, they are currently gonna expand it three foot on each edge for shoulders. And we're currently looking at extending it, right now, we're going up to DOT and we're talking to DOT to try to extend that all the way to the highway. And that also is gonna go into the city limits to Ritchie, we've partnered with them and approved that.
Are you gonna start on the 285 side?
They're gonna start on the Ritchie side and work north.
Okay, so I can't turn right anymore?
They are gonna make a, we did, we did spend significant time talking about that yesterday. They are gonna maintain access to the residents and have flaggers throughout the project.
And then I just wanted to compliment you, we happen to be on Derrick Road down here. Man, that is fantastic what y'all have done out there. It is, you took a road that you couldn't pass two cars or you fall in a hole, and it's, that's great work. I don't, I don't remember what y'all called that, but, is that what it is?
They really have perfected their chip sealing, those guys really know what they're doing, and turn them loose and let them go, and they'll, they'll impress you every time.
You just drive down it, you're happy, I mean, you really are, and so, great job on that one.
Easily pleased.
More to come, more to come. They've, they've done a great job of the plan, they've got their baseline, they have their categories, they have their section identified for categories, and they know what they can do, and they know what they need to, to let out for bid, and, and we'll move forward with the cost savings that they've got and working with our partners, vendors, to help get some of the county road infrastructure where it needs to be. So it's been a journey, and we're now starting to see some of the fruits of that preparation from last year.
Just, I'm sure that you've been, obviously you've been extremely proactive and everything. Are there any projects that you are trying to finish up before it gets too cold to chip? I mean, it's gonna be like 114 next week, so I think we're okay, but...
Would you like a list?
Okay, I mean, so you have, you have some of those lists that you're thinking, you're saying, man, we really are trying to get out and prep, and prep all these and get this done before it gets cold?
What we're currently looking at right now with the budget being finalized is we're talking with the road managers, trying to prioritize what we really need to get done, what we're gonna put out the third-party vendor, what we're gonna try to continue to do in-house. One thing I didn't report is I have our crews currently on a Hagerman cutoff from 206 to Highway 82. That's a 16-mile stretch. We're really gonna try to optimize our operation to even maybe, I, I don't like breaking up projects, but there are several, we have a couple subdivisions that we need to get to before the end of the chip seal season. Because that's something that's been greatly neglected in the county is not only our, our arterial and collector roads, but our residential roads have been greatly neglected that we need to try to start paying some attention to. And we have two, possibly three subdivisions in the north and the south that we're gonna try to get to before it gets too cold to chip seal. There are also several, a few other roads in the south that I think we'll get to after we're completed with bounds. And also it helps that our chip seal season can potentially run into, and through October. So we'll, we start pushing those dates. Last year, I think the last day we quit chip sealing was into October. So it's when it kind of got too cold at night to, to not be able to do that. At which point, our, our initiative is to go out and start blading roads. We're gonna go start prepping in the winter and having those ready to chip seal in the summer, is what we're planning on doing.
I knew you were on it.
I'm on it.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other department heads?
Morning, Chairman, commissioners. I just wanted to let y'all know that over the 4th, we, well, from the 3rd to the 5th, looking at the quick numbers, we ran 13 fires related to fireworks. So for the amount of citizens we have, we feel like that's pretty good. Three of those were assists for the Artesia fire, one was for Carlsbad fire, and the other nine were in the county. So Happy Valley also took the boat out and they patrolled Brantley all day, because we've had a lot of activity out there. And they had a very successful night, no incidents out there reported, so... That's all I've got for now, thank y'all.
Any other department updates? Okay, moving on, travel request consent agenda. Any questions or...
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the travel request consent agendas presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Okay, emergency business.
We have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, legislative update.
I spoke with Mr. Fanning this morning, and nothing has changed from the last. We still have one bill, the body camera bill that has not been signed at this point. And it's, can't find any information on what's going on or not going on. Jerry is working to try and get our local legislators back together in the next couple of three weeks just to kind of get a sense of how they felt, what we need to be looking forward to for the January 2021 session. And he's also working to see if he can get Yvette Harrell over here maybe this week for to come and talk to the county and the city and kind of give an opportunity, offer some feedback for her. So he's, he's working on those elements at this point. And he said, if you disagree with that, then they wouldn't, wouldn't have a long discussion. So if there are questions, I can take them back and try and answer them.
Okay?
No, sir.
Okay. Legislator and elected officials.
Think we have any, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, County Manager.
When last week, I sent a letter or an email to employees, and then another to the elected officials, directors, department heads. And both had a similar tone, and I copied the commission on those, and I, I think you, you've read them. But with the increased number of cases in Eddy County, of COVID-19 cases in Eddy County and surrounding cases, or surrounding counties in New Mexico and on the Texas border. And being summertime, employees are trying to decide what they're gonna do with their families and, and vacations and things like that. And basically, what I asked them to, to do was three things. Consider the safety for themselves, safety for their family, and then the safety for their coworkers. And what they choose to do and how they choose to engage, and then come back to work. There's a lot of, it's, I guess it's been coined as virus fatigue, just the continual barrage of can't do this, do, don't, go do that, here's, this is shut, this is not, you know? And, and it's wearing on, on people, and our employees are included. County's been open for service in some form or fashion from the beginning. We've, we've not closed the office to, to service to the county and the citizens and our customers. We, we, we have restricted access at times by appointment and those kinds of things. And I think the things that we've done, and the departments, the way that they've done them, have been very good. We've had some instances of secondary or tertiary possible exposure, those have all come back negative. So I think the things that we're doing as a county and county employees has been successful. And I would like our employees and county citizens to continue to do those things as they choose how they're going to do their day-to-day lives, their day-to-day businesses, their day-to-day activities and their families. And so I appreciate all of their efforts and attention in doing the jobs that we've asked them to do, that we've paid them to do. It's a tough time, we've, we've done some things to balance our budget that aren't necessarily popular. But in the downturn, it's, it's what we've needed to do to continue to provide service at a consistent level. And as we progress through the year, through the end of this calendar year, we'll take a look at the end of the, end of the calendar year at how our revenue streams have come in relative to our forecast, and we'll reassess our situation at that point. Come back to the commission and have that discussion of can we make some adjustments? Do we have that opportunity? And so I would ask that our, our employees stay the course, be diligent, be accountable and responsible for what you do, and thank you for what you've done. We've seen a lot of good evidence, we just heard from our Public Works Director, we've heard from the Fire Services Director, every department is like that. We've continued to provide those services day in and out. We've had some challenges, looking over at the County Clerk, the, the...
She's a fire extinguisher.
The, the primary voting and the challenges that went on with that. We'll have, we'll have a presidential election coming in November, and who knows what that landscape will look like at that time. But the County Clerk and her department continue to step up and meet those uncertain directions and still providing what they've been asked to do. So every department in the county has done that, so kudos to them. And again, just stay the course, stay with us, we'll, we'll manage through this, so, thank you.
Okay, County Commissioners. Commissioner Crockett?
Oh, I just want to echo what our county manager said, and I've said this numerous times, but we have the best staff in all of the state of New Mexico, out of all 33 counties, I'm just convinced of it. You will never convince me otherwise. Our directors are absolutely amazing in the way that you guys take care of your staff. And to see the continued growth throughout the county even during this downturn is just fantastic. So again, kudos to all of you. I hope everybody had a really safe and happy 4th. 4th of July is my second favorite holiday, so we always go big and have a lot of fun. It's a, it was nice this year just to see so many families getting together and having their own little backyard parties. And just the fireworks show is absolutely amazing, it's probably one of the best I've seen. Kudos to the city, and I'm glad we were able to help them out with a little bit of money. It's nice to see Roxanne back, welcome back, hope you're taking care of your health, and it's good to see you. And I want to say congratulations to Josh, he's getting married on Saturday, so I want to say good luck with that and in your future endeavors to you and Courtney. Look at that face.
Steady on.
Yeah.
I, I really, I really have nothing. I did enjoy the 4th of July, I thought the fireworks show was just magnificent. And the county was able to help out with that, and grateful to the city for putting it on. Commissioner Wood, he said that the fireworks show in Artesia was, was really, really good as well. Appreciate that, love the 4th of July. Hopefully, this board can continue to make the decisions that keeps Eddy County free and that we can all enjoy those freedoms that's been given to us by God.
Thank you. Mr. Woods? Commissioner Henry?
I have nothing to add, y'all have covered it all. That's where we're at.
Well, I just think that everybody's doing great in the county. I think that we're getting the things done that we need to get done, and, and I appreciate it and applaud all the, all the workers and, and all the directors and the county manager. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have another thing, if it's okay. I just want to say, I served with Commissioner Collier for four years on the commission, and he passed away last week, and I just want to keep his family in all of our prayers. And just several of us that are in this room worked with him. He kept us on our toes all those four years, and kept Cass on his toes for sure.
Okay, now we have scheduled an executive session. I would entertain a motion to move into the executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to move into executive session in accordance with the state statute, open, the states, in accordance with the state of New Mexico, open the exact section 10-15-1, dash H, seven, which authorizes the Board of County Commissioners on the executive session to discuss third opinion litigation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, call for the vote?
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
I'm coming back.
What do you think, 30 minutes?
I might, I might give us an hour, I mean, the, the, depends on...
There's some discussion to take.
Yeah, to, to get your understanding, I think, if, I, I would, I would give us an hour, and if, if... an hour, and if, if, if you're all good, in 30 minutes, we'll find everybody and bring them back, but.
We can't.
Can't do that.
Say 30 and then come back.
We, we can make it shorter and, and, and go longer, but we can't make it longer and go shorter.
Well, that's, that's our regular habit, so let's do that.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's do 30, and if it takes 50, we're okay, yeah.
Oh dear.